Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 3rd, 2020 State Board of Education Meeting. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. Welcome to all my colleagues and advisors, staff, visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers. I remind our audience and those listening that this body meets monthly with its official meeting typically scheduled for the first Thursday of the month. Due to COVID-19, the Board's work was split over two days to provide time for the needed discussions from each representative, each respective committee. Today, we'll conclude with our two remaining committees, Educator Standards and Practice and Business Operations. I remind our visitors and online listeners that you can follow the meetings online and see all of our materials by going to SBEMeetings@stateboard.ncpublicschools.gov. Board members, you're reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. And I note for the record that Mr. Buxton has recused himself from EICS I.
Michael, thank you. Joining us now to discuss Vermont Senator Bernie Sanders. Senator, always good to see you. Thank you for joining us.
At this time, I'll call on Ms. White to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. White.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you Chairman Davis. Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. White. We now come to our special recognitions, a time on our agenda when we recognize significant awards, proclamations, resolutions, and those who make a difference in the lives of our public school students that we serve each day. Today, we have the privilege of acknowledging two schools that have received STEM recognition. I now call on Mr. Howard Ginsburg to lead the presentation.
Thank you, and good morning. Chairman Davis, Superintendent Johnson, and other members of the State Board and advisors, all our special guests on behalf of Dr. Stigall, Dr. Mullenix, Mr. Michael, and Ms. Vance, we do thank you for sharing your time with us this morning. My name is Howard Ginsburg, and as the STEM Consultant, I am pleased to be joining you today so we can recognize our North Carolina STEM Schools of Distinction. The STEM Schools of Distinction Program holds schools to incredibly high standards that prepare highly-educated, global-ready students empowered with the social and emotional skills for success. It is five well-defined overarching principles that the program ensures the resulting distinction is truly that, a well-earned testament to the amazing educational practices that benefit our students, our schools, and our communities. And I am extremely proud today to announce that after rigorous scrutiny and close examination, we have two schools deserving recognition as North Carolina STEM Schools of Distinction. I applaud the faculty and administration of Lake Shore Elementary in Iredell-Statesville for earning the Prepare Designation, along with the faculty and administration of Hawksnest Steam Academy in Gaston County for earning the Model Designation. Both of these schools have shown that even in the shadow of COVID-19, an incredible commitment toward igniting the passion for creative learning and growing a culture of STEM education within their communities. These schools are joining an elite group of only thirty other schools across the state to have achieved this level of excellence. Since 2014, our program has guided educational leadership practices and STEM learning opportunities for students. Introduced this past year was a renewal process that allows previously recognized schools the opportunity to demonstrate that their commitment to excellence has remained uncompromised and to extend their prior STEM designations an additional three years. I'm also happy to share today that sixteen North Carolina schools earned a continuance of their STEM School of Distinction designation for the outstanding work that they're continuing to demonstrate each day. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Christopher Grace, the Principal of Lake Shore Elementary, if he would please share some remarks about his school having earned the Prepare Designation.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Ginsburg. Thank you, State Board members, for recognizing us today. It is certainly an honor to be here. To start us off, I'd like to introduce one of our fifth-grade students, Kyla Gala, to say our STEM pledge. She, along with the rest of our fifth-grade teachers here, has been on this journey since its inception. Kya?
Thank you. As a Lake Shore STEM student, I will spark and motivate a desire to inquire, to lead, to discover, and to have a growth mindset. I realize my teachers are not here to give me all the answers, but to guide me to discover and to be proud of my learning path. STEM is learning by doing and challenging myself and my classmates to not give up if we don't succeed the first one, but to try again. I am a Lake Shore STEM student.
Thank you, Kya. It is Kya's birthday today as well, so we certainly wish her happy birthday. Now, I'd like to introduce two of our teachers to represent the staff at Lake Shore. First, Raina McGuire, who led the school last year as our STEM Project Manager, and Rebecca Burry, who brought the STEM idea forward to the school six years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. Applying to be a STEM School of Distinction was not taken lightly. Our journey began with a hundred percent of teacher buy-in, which was financially funded by teachers writing grants, which led to developing partnerships with various community and universities. That encouraged professional development. All these parts assisted Lake Shore's STEM goal team to develop and implement a rigorous research-based STEM curriculum. This was definitely one of the most challenging and important decisions that we have ever made as a school community. Each year, having to redefine the way we think about education through the students' eyes as we focused on STEM. It took us more than three years in going back and forth to the drawing board. We almost gave up a few times, but we kept plugging forward because we knew that the process would essentially motivate our students to do more, be more. We couldn't have done it without our business partners, Sweet Dream Mattresses, Aloha Veterinary, and Lowe's Home Improvement, and our Parent Advisory Board. It is my honor to present Ms. Rebecca Burry.
Over the past six years, our teachers have worked diligently to create a collaborative STEM environment that fosters problem-based learning. It's been a lot of planning and a lot of hours, but this initiative has truly been the heart work of all of our teachers, K through five. With the support of our district and our business partners and our parents, today, our teachers' STEM school is able to say, "We are a North Carolina STEM School of Recognition," which will be the first in Iredell County.
Thank you, Ms. Burry. To close, I just want to say that I am so proud of our students, staff, community members, parents of Lake Shore Elementary and Iredell-Statesville schools for all the support and hard work making this possible. It will be a delight to continue this journey as STEM education leaders. Once again, thanks from Lake Shore Elementary School and Iredell County.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. To you and to your entire school community for the work that you guys are doing. Next, I'm happy to introduce Principal Jill Payne, who will share on behalf of Hawksnest Academy, who is receiving a Model School of Distinction Designation.
Good morning. It's an honor to be here in front of our State Board of Education, and we want to thank you for giving us time to talk about our school. On behalf of Gaston County Schools, I would like to personally thank our Superintendent Jeff Booker and our Associate Superintendent, Dr. Melissa Faulknight, who is on the call with us, and members of our school board for supporting our vision of our all-inclusive magnet program. Four years ago, we opened the doors to students from all across our county as the district's first elementary STEAM magnet school. We purposely used the five overarching principles in the North Carolina STEM rubric to design our short and long-term goals, one of which was to be standing here in front of you today. What an honor it is to be recognized as a model STEM School of Distinction, the first in our district. Some of the strong foundational practices you will see in our school include students working collaboratively in teams, highly-engaged classrooms where students are exploring through hands-on learning, and teachers collaborating to create integrated lessons and real-world problems. Our teachers' work as a team and participate in job-embedded professional development, as well as seek out personalized personal professional development opportunities to ensure that they can be their best and maximize their skills and abilities to grade, to increase the impact that they have on student learning. Due to the hard work of implementing STEAM concepts through problem-based learning instructional model, our school has seen significant increase in student achievement, with more than thirty-eight percent proficiency points gained in our four years. Our school has promoted an inclusive environment where every student gets the opportunity to experience success and be involved in the integrative practices of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Students from Hawksnest STEAM Academy have placed in many events and competitions like robotics, Science Olympiad, Math Olympiad, Math Masters, as well as our district and regional science fair, and this inclusive practice is evident in our North Carolina Science Integrate scores, where ninety-six percent of our fifth-grade students scored proficient and ninety-three percent of them scored college and career-ready. I am so thankful for the staff, our students, our families, our district administration, members of our community, and our school board that make up the Hawksnest family, and the culture that exists of high expectation and involvement, which is what helped us achieve this recognition. I want to thank you for this application process, as it was a time of great reflection for our staff, and it ignited a renewed excitement in planning for our future. We have not only grown as a school over the past four years, but as a community with many family-based, faith-based, and corporate partnerships. One of the greatest initiatives that we implemented through this process was our STEAM advisory. Our group of local STEAM business leaders support the growth and development not only of our program, but the future innovators and leaders within our building. These students will flourish in STEM careers because of the commitment of these individuals and investment in our school. I would like to now introduce you to two of our Hawksnest family members. I have a fifth-grade, or a sixth-grade student. He is a returning student, Aiden Irish, and then Ms. Sierra Jennings, our lead STEAM teacher, will follow up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aiden Irish, former student body president of Hawksnest STEAM Academy. I would like to tell you about all my experience as Hawksnest STEAM Academy. One of our problem-based learning projects we did in fifth grade was to be an owner of a ski slope. We had to design a ski resort and different activities using a budget. As an engineer, we had to design a structure and create an advertisement to try and rebuild an existing rundown ski resort. In our classes, we learned on hands-on experience like labs insights. We saw how worms would react to different soil, and in math, we made art out of fractions. Another experience I was able to participate in was STEAM advisory. This group talked about STEAM field trips and virtual opportunities, well as Oculus Quest. It was exciting to know that they were going to help us for our school. My favorite part about Hawksnest was all the teachers. They are kind, and if you need help, they will help you. Learning at Hawksnest is fun, and I know it has prepared me to be successful.
Thank you, Aiden. I'm Sierra Jennings, the lead teacher here at Hawksnest STEAM Academy. Ladies and gentlemen, just by listening to Aiden, you see he is well on his way to becoming a young man who can do anything he sets his mind to. Aiden, like all of our other elementary students, are being prepared to be productive citizens that excel in the STEM industry. We launched our school in the 2016-2017 school year with the book, "What Do You Do With An Idea?" by Kobe Yamada. Through this story and the STEM culture that we have established, our students have learned that they can take their ideas and change the world. Our hope and passion is that as a North Carolina model STEM School of Distinction, we always ignite students' passion to make a difference in our world through the lens of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Thank you again for allowing us to apply and for recognizing the hard work of our students, staff, and community who all work together to make Hawksnest STEAM Academy a place where learning, our learning environment inspires success in a lifetime of learning. Thank you again for allowing us to be here today.
Well, many thanks to you, Hawksnest Academy. Congratulations to your school community for all your outstanding work. It has been my pleasure to identify both of these schools and to honor them today as the newest in the North Carolina STEM Schools of Distinction.
Thank you, Mr. Ginsburg, and on behalf of the Board, I'd like to extend our congratulations and thanks to both Lake Shore and Hawksnest, to the Superintendent and Principal, to every parent and every student and teacher in both those schools. You're an inspiration for what we can deliver in terms of public education to our students, and we know our state is in good hands with these students becoming future leaders across our state. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Each year, we have the distinct pleasure of recognizing another cohort of Principal and Teacher of the Year leaders. While the events were different this year, as we celebrated their accomplishments, their contributions that these individuals make in their schools and districts do not go unnoticed. In fact, even in this climate, they're even more appreciated and needed. At this time, I recognize Dr. Sonya Brown to lead this presentation. Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman Davis, Superintendent Johnson, and others on the Board. Good morning. My name is Sonya Brown, and I'm the Chair of the State Recognition Program Committee. So, just a little bit about both programs, the Teacher of the Year and the Principal of the Year programs are high-profile events for the agency, and since 1970 and 1984 respectively, the department, along with corporate sponsors, have facilitated these programs, recognizing outstanding educators. Now, both programs are statewide services provided by the District and Regional Support Division. Now, the journey for all starts at the school level, progresses to the district level, and then to the regional level. And these programs normally reach their pinnacle in April and May at the formal naming ceremonies. The selection process is facilitated in each region by regional education facilitators representing the District and Regional Support Division. So, since 1970, North Carolina has recognized outstanding teachers through the Teacher of the Year program. The mission of the Borough's Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year program is to promote the profession through advocacy and support while recognizing quality teaching professionals implementing best practices within classrooms across North Carolina. First, individuals are chosen to represent their respective schools as Teacher of the Year, and then they advance to compete at the district level. And similarly, individual charter schools nominate Teachers of the Year who participate in a selection process facilitated by the Office of Charter Schools. Now, charter schools are clustered together to form the ninth region of the state, and I would like to thank the Office of Charter Schools for their support and for all they do in this program. So, after the District and Charter School nomination processes are completed, the Charter School Teacher of the Year joins the eight Regional Teachers of the Year as a finalist for the State Teacher of the Year. And finally, the state selection process continues with each regional finalist being interviewed, and his or her portfolio reviewed by a state selection committee. The Borough's Welcome Fund Teacher of the Year serves as the North Carolina Ambassador for the state's school teachers, and the Teacher of the Year serves in an advisory capacity to the State Board of Education for a two-year term, and also serves on the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Public School Forum. The Borough's Welcome Fund serves as the major sponsor for this program, along with other sponsorships from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and they include North Carolina State Athletics, Low Automotive, No Kid Hungry, Lenovo, and Go Global. And now, I present to you from Cumberland International Early College High in Cumberland County Schools District, the 2020 Borough's Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year, Ms. Maureen Stover. Ms. Stover?
Thank you so much, Dr. Brown, and congratulations to the Lake Shore and Hawksnest schools. That is a huge distinction, and we are so proud to see how wonderfully you're doing and what a tough act to follow after seeing those amazing students on the screen. Thank you, Dr. Brown, Chairman Davis, State Superintendent Johnson, and the members and advisors of the North Carolina State Board of Education for inviting the 2020 Teacher of the Year cohort to today's Board meeting. My name is Maureen Stover, and as the 2020 Borough's Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year, it is my privilege to introduce to you the amazing cohort of teachers who I will have the honor to serve with this year. As a graduate of the United States Air Force Academy, my undergraduate program prioritized leadership and service before self. And while Chairman Davis may argue that West Point does a better job of preparing its grads for leadership, I think we can both agree that Annapolis ranks third. I didn't truly understand leadership until I was a young Second Lieutenant newly-commissioned in the Air Force. What I quickly realized was that while it was my duty to make decisions and lead my airmen, I had an amazing support group of senior non-commissioned officers who could offer me insight and provide me with guidance. I was not expected to know everything, but I was expected to know where to go and who to talk to in order to make the right decisions. As I transitioned from the Air Force and into education, I brought these lessons with me. The team who I will introduce to you today is my trusted group of experts. I may not always have all the answers, but I have a team who does. We are nine educators who represent all eight regions of our state, from the mountains to the sea. We represent traditional public schools, choice schools, alternative schools, and charter schools. We represent AP, IB, honors, regular education, ELL, and EC students. We represent the secondary and elementary levels in all content areas, including the arts and music. We have unique educational experiences, unique life experiences, and unique perspectives. But our diversity is our shared strength, because it enables us to approach each situation from multiple viewpoints, so we can be the very best advocates that we can for the students and teachers in North Carolina. We are diverse, but we do have one common trait, and that is that we stand for every child and every teacher in North Carolina. We are excited about the year that we have before us. As a team, we'll be focusing on two main areas. First, for anyone who heard me speak in support of the Equity Resolution and Strategic Plan Framework yesterday, it should come as no surprise that our team will actively seek opportunities to support initiatives and to add a voice to programs focused on equitable education. We know that barriers to a basic sound education exist in our public schools, especially for our students and marginalized populations, and we are committed to being part of the solution to remove those barriers so we can provide an equitable education to every single child in North Carolina. We see power in fostering school environments that support culturally responsive instruction and restorative practices, and we are committed to establishing clear pathways for teachers of color to enter our classrooms. Our second area of focus will be increasing support for social-emotional learning in our pre-K-12 schools. For many on our team, the social-emotional learning of our students has been at the forefront of our minds for several years. But in our current situation, with schools opening and blended in remote learning environments, and with our students struggling with the stress of a pandemic, we are more resolved than ever to actively promote and support the social-emotional learning needs of our students and our teachers. So, without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce you to this extraordinary team. First up is Jeannie Owen. She is the Northeast Region Teacher of the Year. Jeannie teaches fifth grade at Oak Rock Oak School in Hyde County. She has twenty years' teaching experience. She earned her BS from Radford University, an M.D. from Virginia Tech, and a certificate in school leadership from Appalachian State. She is the School Improvement Team Chair, a third-through-fifth-grade professional learning community leader, the school testing coordinator, the lead AIG teacher on her district's MTSS team, and is a 2019 NewZella Certified Teacher. Our Southeast Region Teacher of the Year is Daniel Scott. Daniel has four years of teaching experience as a high school band and music teacher at Swansboro High School in Anzo County. He earned his BS from Western Carolina University, where he was a North Carolina Teaching Fellow. He is the Spirit of Atlanta Brass Papiton Head, the Phi Mu Alpha Symphona Music Director in Kuluwe, and a member of the Western Carolina University Entourage. Daniel has also been accepted into the Education Policy Fellows Program. Our North Carolina Central Region Teacher of the Year is Carol Forrest. She earned her BA from Northwest Nazarene University and has thirty-nine years of teaching experience. Carol teaches kindergarten through second grade adaptive curriculum at Long Hill Elementary in Franklin County. She is a member of her school's improvement team, a district autism team member, and the early intervention transition team leader. Carol was also recognized in 2014 as a Teacher of the Year, and she provides a voice for the students and families in our exceptional children population. Our Piedmont Triad Regional Teacher of the Year is Tanya Smith. Tanya earned her BA in piano performance from Elon College and her teaching certificate from Catawba College. She has twenty-three years of experience teaching middle and high school vocal music at Elkin High School in Elkin City Schools. She is a School Improvement Team Member, the Surrey County Honors Chorus Coordinator, the Senior Play Music Director, the Project-Based Learning Cohort Teacher, the Mindfulness in the Classroom Professional Development Leader, an NCVPS Professional Development Facilitator, a Go Global Australian Participant, an Elkin City Schools Global Team Member, and has served as a mentor teacher. Tanya is a member of the Music Educators of North Carolina. She has been recognized for her excellence in teaching as a four-time Teacher of the Year and was the J.C.'s Outstanding Young Educator of the Year in 1992. Tanya was recently accepted into the Education Policy Fellows Program. Our Southwest Region Teacher of the Year is Chad Bean. Chad earned his BA from Lenora Ryan University and has twelve years of experience as a tenth and twelfth-grade English teacher at Burns High School in Cleveland County. Chad is a Fellowship of Christian Athletes Huddle Leader, a Feeding Kids Cleveland County Food Program Volunteer, and the Burns High School Professional Development Lead. Chad's educational leadership and excellence was also recognized in 2015 when he was named Teacher of the Year. Chad recently celebrated his second anniversary as the pastor at Catalyst Fire Church. He is an inspiration to our entire team, both in and out of the classroom. Our Northwest Region Teacher of the Year is Maggie Murphy. Maggie earned her BS and MA from Appalachian State University and has eleven years of teaching experience. She teaches fourth grade at Piney Creek Elementary in Allegheny County. Maggie's excellence as an educator has distinguished her as the 2019 Participate Learning Teacher of the Year, the 2019 Veterans of Foreign Wars District Teacher of the Year, and the 2020 Sanford, North Carolina Teacher of the Year. She serves as her school's Improvement Team Chair, is on the Allegheny Writers Board, runs a bookmobile program for her community, and established a Classroom Prayer Partners Program. As a leader in and out of the classroom, Maggie is a Professional Development Facilitator for NCVPS and Participate, is a Go Global Participant, and was recently accepted into the Education Policy Fellows Program. Our Western Teacher of the Year is Dawn Gilchrist. Dawn earned her BA from Western Carolina University, an MA from Columbia University, and an MFA from Warren Wilson College. She is National Board Certified with thirty-three years of teaching experience. She currently teaches ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth-grade English at Jackson County School in Jackson County. She serves her schools- She serves her school's English Department Chair and is a beginning teacher mentor. An accomplished author, Dawn organized an article that our team wrote for NCEd in the spring of 2020. Last, but most definitely not least, is our Charter School Teacher of the Year, Ashley Bailey. Ashley earned her BS from North Carolina State University and is National Board Certified. She has 18 years' teaching experience and currently teaches 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade Biology and AP Biology at Roxborough Community School in Roxborough. Ashley serves her school as a beginning teacher mentor, is the Science Department Chair, and the Grade Level Chair. She was awarded the Bright Ideas Grant in 2017, 2018, and 2019. A valuable member of our team, Ashley provides the charter school perspective in our discussions. The night before our ceremony in July, Jeannie said, "Empowerment comes from the voice of one; miracles come from the voice of many." It is such an honor to introduce this team of miracle workers to you. We are problem solvers who are ready to work, and we are committed to improving the educational opportunities for every student in North Carolina. Thank you, Chairman Davis, for giving me the floor to introduce this amazing team. I am so excited about the things that we will do for North Carolina students and teachers in the next year.
Thank you, Maureen and your cohort, and we look forward to great things coming from this group. The Wells Fargo Principal of the Year Award was introduced in 1984 to recognize the role of the principal in establishing an environment conducive to the pursuit and achievement of academic excellence in North Carolina schools. Now, this foundation sponsors the award in conjunction with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Since the inception of the program, there have been 40 Wells Fargo North Carolina Principals of the Year, 264 regional award recipients, and 3,364 local Wells Fargo Principals of the Year. The Principal of the Year Program recognizes principals also at the district, regional, and statewide levels. The local process begins with each school system selecting one principal as its local Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. The selection process at the district level is the responsibility of the district superintendent or designee. The person chosen as the local Wells Fargo Principal of the Year represents his or her school system in the regional selection process. The regional selection process includes an evaluation of the candidate through a portfolio review and an interview. Eight regional finalists participate in the state selection process, and the state selection process continues with each regional finalist being interviewed at his or her portfolio reviewed by a state selection committee as well. Excuse me. The Wells Fargo Principal of the Year serves as the North Carolina Ambassador for the state schools principals. The Principal of the Year serves in an advisory capacity to the State Board of Education for a two-year term and also serves on the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Public School Forum. Wells Fargo serves as the major sponsor for this program, but they do this along with No Kid Hungry, Hampton Inn, Justin's, and Education First. And now I present to you from Shuford Elementary in Newton-Conover City Schools District, the 2020 Wells Fargo North Carolina Principal of the Year, Ms. Keisha Clemmons. Ms. Clemmons?
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for the warm welcome, and good morning. Good morning, Superintendent Johnson, members and advisors of the State Board. I am delighted to join you today as the 2020 Wells Fargo North Carolina Principal of the Year. I am thrilled to serve as an advisor to the State Board, and I am excited to represent North Carolina educators. I'm a proud principal at Shuford Elementary, where I lead and serve an outstanding group of students, staff, and community. I began my career as a teaching fellow and then a principal fellow, and I've had the opportunity to serve schools from the east to the west part of the state. As a school leader, there are many areas of passion, but I do believe that our work in schools and everything we do must be filtered through an equity lens. We must have the courage to lead for social justice and equity. We must challenge the status quo, dismantle systems of oppression, and advocate for our most vulnerable marginalized populations. Also believe that all students deserve a high-quality personalized education. We know that a one-size-fits-all approach is no longer acceptable for our students, and we must work to transform our schools into an equitable, engaging learning space where students are empowered to take ownership of their learning. And finally, I believe that we must support our teachers and our administrators with the challenges that they face in our schools. We must invest in professional learning to equip teachers with the knowledge and skills to lead in the classroom and to serve all students. And we also must support and coach our principals as they face the complexities of school leadership. On behalf of the Regional Principals of the Year, we would like to share our unwavering commitment to all students, all educators, and all families. We get the distinct opportunity to shape the lives of young people we serve each day and make our communities a better place. At this time, I would like to introduce each of our Regional Principals of the Year. Our first Regional Principal of the Year, representing the Northeast Region, is Ms. Sheila Evans. She is the principal at White Oak Elementary in Edmonton-Chowan Schools. Ms. Evans has 20 years of administrative experience. She's a National Board Certified Teacher, and she also received Principal of the Year in Edmonton-Chowan Schools in 2005, 2011, and 2013. Next, we have Ms. Deborah Hoffman. She represents the Southeast Region. She is the principal at Jacksonville Commons Elementary in Onslow County Schools. And Ms. Hoffman has nine years of administrative experience. She earned her MSA at East Carolina University. She was a We Are Leading Award nominee in 2019 and also a National Board Certified Teacher. Next, we have Dr. Ruth Steininger. She represents the North Central Region Principal. She is the principal at Olive Chapel Elementary from Wake County Public Schools. Dr. Steininger has 24 years of administrative experience. She's earned her EDD at East Carolina University. She's presented at the North Carolina Educational Leadership Academy Summer Conference in 2019, leading a session called "Learning to Lead with Purpose." And she has been a Principal of the Year finalist in Wake County Public Schools in 2018. Next, we have Alfred Jean Hammond, representing the Sandhills Region. She is the principal at Upchurch Elementary and Hope County Schools. And Ms. Hammond has nine years of administrative experience. She earned her MSA at Fairholme State University. She was also the Assistant Principal of the Year in Hope County Schools in 2015. She's earned a North Carolina Schools Purple Star Award, and she's increased her school and performance growth by 23 points over four years. Next, we have Ashley Craven Limley, representing the Piedmont Triad Region. Ms. Limley is the principal at Southwood Elementary and Davison County Schools. She has 13 years of administrative experience, earning an MSA from Gardner-Webb University, also a National Board Certified Teacher, and then receiving Southwood Elementary Signature School Recognition in 2017. Next is Dr. Jennifer Brinson, representing the Southwest Region. Dr. Brinson is the principal at Wolf Meadow Elementary in Cabarrus County Schools. She has eight years of administrative experience, earning her EDD at Gardner-Webb University, and she's led one of the first high schools in the nation to implement opportunity culture, which is a teacher recognition. And finally, we have Ms. Lori Fox, who is representing the Western Region. Ms. Fox is the principal at Haywood Early College in Haywood County Schools. She has eight years of administrative experience, earned an MSA from Western Carolina University. She is currently the president-elect for Haywood County Principal and Assistant Principal Association, and she earned the National Blue Ribbon Exemplary Performance Award in 2018. I want to thank all of our Regional Principals of the Year. I am very blessed to work with an amazing group of leaders and excited for the work that we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha, and your cohort, and we look forward to great things coming from this group. I consider it a professional honor to serve these dedicated and highly skilled professionals. Many thanks goes to the State Board, Department of Public Instruction, sponsors, and the District and Regional Support Division for all of your assistance and support. Thank you all, and have a great day.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and we extend our congratulations to Ms. Stover and Ms. Clemmons. We look forward to having them among us at future board meetings. And our congratulations to all of our Teacher and Principals of the Year. Boy, if there's ever one thing to be proud of to be a North Carolinian, it's the teachers and principals who lead our schools and teach our students each day, and you're an inspiration to all of us. Thank you so much. One of the most important partnerships that the State Board of Education has is with the Department of Health and Human Services. DHHS teaches our youngest students in pre-K and then sends them to us prepared for kindergarten. This partnership has only been extended and deepened during the COVID-19 pandemic. And before we hear from our fine colleague Deputy Superintendent Susan Gail Perry, I'd like to take a moment and congratulate Secretary Mandy Cohen, who is the 2020 recipient of the Leadership in Public Health Practice Award from Harvard University's TH Chan School of Public Health. She received this honor for her leadership, her selfless service, and her public health contributions. All North Carolinians have benefited from having Secretary Cohen at the helm in this pandemic, and we congratulate her and thank her for her service to this state. And now I'd like to turn to Chief Deputy Secretary Susan Gail Perry for this presentation on our state's COVID-19 response.
Thank you, Chairman Davis, and good morning, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be with you all. This is Susan Gail Perry. I'm the Chief Deputy Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services. Chairman Davis, thank you for the great recognition for Secretary Cohen. We're certainly very proud of her and all of her accomplishments, and I'm personally very proud to work for her. So appreciate that recognition. And I am joined today by Becky Clanchard, our Senior Policy Advisor for Education. She and I are going to split this presentation a little bit between us. We just wanted to take an opportunity, now that schools have started to reopen, either in Plan B or in Plan C, to give you a snapshot of where we are, both broadly as a state in terms of our overall COVID-19 indicators, and then some specific information regarding K-12 schools at this time. So I'll jump right in and start with where we are right now. But I do want to say I was able to join a little bit early, and it was really inspiring to hear from all of the principal leaders, and so grateful to all of you for your incredible service and all that you're doing to help children be successful during this very challenging time. So getting down to where we are as a state right now, I think many of you follow closely the press briefings and the news and are aware that we are making some cautious strides forward. As of Friday, September 4th, at 5:00 p.m., we'll be moving into what we're calling Phase 2.5. So just a few things about that for everyone to know. What that means is that we will continue to require face coverings. I'm going to talk more about that, the importance of that, a new campaign that we're launching this week where six feet distancing is not possible. And we have now aligned that with the K-12 school guidance so that it's face coverings for children five years and older. We have moved the mask gathering limits up just a little bit, 25 indoors and 50 outdoors. Just as a note, remember that education settings are not subject to the mask gathering limits. And what, in fact, education settings are subject to is the K-12 Public Health School Toolkit, which we'll talk more about in a little bit. And I won't go over all the things that are open and open with restriction in detail, except for to say that some of the things just highlighted in blue there. For many of you, it's relevant that we have reopened playgrounds, indoor and outdoor playgrounds, also museums and aquariums at 50% occupancy, gyms and indoor exercise facilities at 30% capacity. And again, you'll recall that anytime we're doing that physical activity, hard physical activity and expirating, we want to be particularly cautious about social distancing, particularly if we don't have a face covering on and we're doing strenuous exercise. We've also allowed for some outdoor visitation at nursing homes. These are some of our most vulnerable folks, so we want to be very thoughtful about how we make sure they have good quality of life and are also safe and protected. So those are some of the changes. Everything else remains the same from the last time I was with you all. So I'm going to move on and just talk a little bit about the indicators. Nobody does it better than Secretary Cohen in the press briefings, talking about how we approach our indicators. As a reminder, we look at a combination of indicators altogether as we make decisions about how we can move forward or when we need to pause. And you can see that as of yesterday, we are generally in alignment with sort of the White House guidance in a yellow zone. So we have seen some stabilizing of our cases, although certainly not declining cases. We have seen stabilization in the trajectory of COVID-like syndromic cases, if not some positive movement forward there. So in general, all of our indicators, as you can see there, are relatively stable, though still not at the levels we would hope them to be. I think you've heard Governor Cooper and the secretary talk about that as a time when we continue to use our Demer approach to move cautiously forward, that is the time we really need to double down on our three W's. Again, I'll talk about that again at the end. But we want to, you know, anytime we make progress, and certainly this is true for our schools, and I think some of you saw some of the issues that happened with our higher education residential settings. We want to make sure that we're using that Demer approach and being very thoughtful and minding our three W's. Moving on to some specific detail on the next slide. I think the important takeaway from this slide, a couple things. What this is showing is lab confirmed cases by age group and weekly totals. I just want to say, we wanted to share this with you all to show on the positive side, thus far, as schools have begun slowly and cautiously to reopen with those strong health and safety protocols in place and Plan B for those districts who have chosen that, we are not seeing a spike in cases among children. But I do want to just say this is very early data. And if I move to the next slide, just to give you a sense on the next slide of where we are with clusters, you can see, again, and these are publicly reported as required by our state law, as is childcare. You can see we have some clusters, not a significant number of clusters. And what I think is really important to point out here is that, you know, the cases are largely, as has been consistent, in childcare among staff. And what that tells us is what we already know about, in particular, younger children being less likely to get COVID, are less likely to be strong transmitters of the virus. But it also tells us that it's incredibly important that our adults, both inside the school setting and outside of the school setting, are continuing to adhere very rigorously to the three W's in order to protect themselves and others from COVID-19. Next slide, please. And this just, again, gives you a snapshot at the new cases per 10,000 residents. I wanted to share this. I wanted to share this map, and you can think about it as you think about how, how districts have made choices about whether they're going to be in Plan B or Plan C. It's not a direct overlay in terms of the, the rate of cases. But, and, and we know there's a little bit of movement about exactly how school districts are handling. So as I, as I get ready to turn it over to Becky Clanchard, who's going to talk about our, our school survey results, you know, I, I just want to caveat that we know it's a, it's a rapidly moving situation and schools are making different choices in districts all the time. So we have the best data that we have. I want to thank, give a real shout out to the districts and the charter schools who were, who have been very responsive to our surveys and to the Superintendent's Association for helping us to get that survey out. It gives us really valuable information about how schools are doing and what additional public health support they might need. So Becky, I'm going to turn it over to you. Talk about the results.
Thanks so much, Susan. And I hope everyone can hear me okay. Thank you so much for, for having me this morning. And, and Susan, I echo what you said about the beginning of getting to listen in for the, the few minutes before we started. Thank you so much, everyone, for all the work that you do for kids and families across our state. As Susan mentioned, the previous map that she just showed us that showed new cases for the first couple of weeks of school reopening, it was August 18th through August 31st was the timing of that previous map. We just wanted to contrast that with a, a quick map of the most recent information we have from the North Carolina School Board Association about how school districts, as of the 26th of August, had reopened under Plan B versus Plan C. And as you can see here, the yellow, um, school districts have a plan, had a Plan B model at that point. And it, you know, if you contrast that with the previous map, there, there is not any kind of patterning that we can note at this point about new cases being related in any way to reopening under Plan B. Next slide, please. And as Susan mentioned, we were very happy to partner with the School Superintendent's Association and DPI to administer a school reopening survey through DHHS. We administered that survey last week and had nearly 80% response rate already from our school districts and a 64% response rate from our charter schools across the state, which are two really, really solid survey participation rates and indicate to, to us at least that our schools are working so hard and have worked hard to prepare to reopen. Many of them are reopening in person. And they were eager to share their reflections on how the school reopening process has gone and their reflections on whether it's for their own individual school, if they were a charter school representing their results in the survey, or the collection of their schools, if they were superintendent answering the survey. What we saw was that among our survey respondents, it split about 50/50 in terms of what school districts and what charter schools are reopening in Plan B versus Plan C. And then in terms of their reflections on preparation to meet our public health requirements, we asked them to reflect on a scale of one to 10, one being they really don't feel prepared yet and need some more support to feel like their schools are 100% ready to meet all of the requirements. Versus a 10 is they are ready to rock and roll under each of these four buckets of our public health requirements in the Strong Schools NC Toolkit, which folks on our state I know are, are well versed in at this point. And I want to draw our attention to just a high level view as to what those survey results were. And then I'll share what we are planning to do with this information at DHHS with our partners. So if you look down these four bullets here, sorry to fake you out, Deanna. When we look at these four bullets here, the first is under social distancing and minimizing exposure. We see that for our school districts, they are averaging a pretty high score of nearly an eight out of 10. And the range there is from four to 10. So we then compare that with our charter schools, who have a broader range that I want to draw our attention to. There's a range there from one all the way up to 10. And we see a similar pattern in the results pretty much all the way down. We see our school districts, which again are at the administrative level, our superintendents are responding on behalf of their many schools in terms of their preparation, are averaging overall at a, a higher level and at a less broad spread of responses versus our charters. Our individual school directors, our school leaders are responding in more of a range that some charter school leaders don't feel prepared yet to meet our public health requirements, and some feel very well-prepared. So we have been poring over these data, looking at trends. For example, how are our school districts and our charter schools feeling like they are able to reduce density effectively and follow cleaning protocols? How are they able to handle our screening protocols and protocols for isolation or exclusion from school? We're also paying really close attention to our communications plan responses. And we see that schools that feel very confident about their communications plans related to our public health requirements and responding to suspected or confirmed cases, they also feel confident in these other buckets and these other domains. So we're, we're very interested in learning more from those school districts and from those charter schools that are communicating very well externally with their local health departments and internally with their own staff members. And we want to see what we can learn from them. And I did want to highlight in this last bullet here, when districts and charter schools were asked to respond to their preparation for wearing cloth face coverings and for cleaning supplies and hygiene requirements, those averages in terms of feeling good about being able to meet those requirements were the highest in terms of their average responses. Real, that's really great because we know that our three W's are absolutely critical to follow. We know Senator Cohen speaks on them all the time. And I know Deputy Secretary Gail Perry will as well. That wearing a cloth face covering is the single most useful thing, an important thing that we can do to help keep our children safe. And that seems to be going, you know, on the whole, very well in our schools that have reopened in person. Next slide. Thank you so much. And in terms of what we're going to do next and where we're going to take this information, we are digging in on our end, our local health departments. And we want to use the information from these survey responses to provide our local health leaders with more tools to support their communications with our K-12 schools across districts and with our individual charter schools. And in particular, we want to work with our education partners to think about the unique needs of our charter schools, who might have different operational needs in terms of adhering to our public health requirements. And we want to think really specifically about them, their communications needs and their operational needs, given the wide spread of their survey responses. We also want to work with our education partners to follow up with our school districts and charter schools that specifically requested in their public health survey responses, more support in, in any of the domains that I just walked through or in another area where they highlighted they would like some more operational support. And then finally, we want to get to 100% response rate among our districts and our charter schools. So we will be following up with our education partners to get there and follow up with those who did not yet respond to the survey. And then next slide before I hand it back over to Susan. We, I just wanted to highlight one other piece of information that we gathered in the survey along with public health requirement reflections. We also asked schools and districts to provide us with more information. If they were operating under a Plan B approach, how were they reducing density if they needed to? And we found that 11 school districts and among our respondents and 10 individual charter schools noted that they are specifically prioritizing bringing back younger children for in-person instruction while their older students are doing more of remote learning. And this is going to play into what Deputy Secretary Gail Perry will, will share on the next few slides. So I'm going to hand it back over to her.
Thanks, Becky. Really appreciate the, the good work on the survey, but also the, the degree to which I think our districts are feeling like they are prepared. It has a lot to do with the incredible amount of work that, that went into the development of the public schools toolkit. And Becky took a big part in that. And also the great partnership that we had with our colleagues at DPI. So thanks to all of you for that great work. I do want to touch briefly on, and I know we're short on time here, just school age care needs. Obviously, as Becky just mentioned, and I, I think as, as the governor and secretary Cohen said back in July, when in fact, our, our trends were, were less good and they're moving in a more positive direction. I think all of us share the goal of wanting children to be able to be back in school and back in the classrooms. We are seeing that some school districts are making the choice to bring back younger children. I think that addresses a couple of issues. One is it certainly is helping to address the needs of working families, which we know is a big issue, which is why I'm going to talk about school age care. And also it, it is supportive of what we know about COVID transmissibility and younger children overall. So just touching briefly on school age care, because this has become a very big issue. And many districts have been working hard on that. And the Department of Health and Human Services has certainly been working hard on that as have a, a number of community-based organizations. Given that districts are, are either operating in, in Plan B or Plan C, we are seeing more and more situations where groups of children are being brought together in group settings with adults to essentially provide a learning day while the children are in front of their computer to do remote learning. So if we could go to the next slide. I do want to say, first of all, we've been trying to work on this with our licensed childcare partners. Do you want to say that we know that there's well over 25,000 available school age care spots and already licensed programs that do school age care? And we're really trying to make sure that families have the opportunity to get connected to that care. And you can see there's an 800 number there. And we encourage you as, as school board and as district leaders to continue to push this information out. It supports our childcare community and supports safe care options. Next slide. I will say, and not to get in, I, I don't want to bore everyone with the ins and outs of state law and regulation, but we also understood that the licensed childcare setting was probably not going to adequately be able to address all the needs. And so many school districts are engaging and contracting with community-based organizations like WISE and Parks and Recreations to provide additional school age care learning days. Because remember, these are their learning days. And in these arrangements with school districts, they are being required to meet the, the toolkit guidance. And we encourage school districts to continue to, to do this kind of contracting until schools are open and able, able to open safely, which I know we're hoping every, everyone is working towards. Next, next slide. And there are a number of resources for schools and community-based organizations to use. I will say, yesterday, we were very disappointed that the legislature did not vote to accept an amendment that would have layered in what we considered some fundamentally important health and safety protections for these community-based organization arrangements. So the amendment would have required that staff had first aid and CPR training, at least one staff person, that they were required to report community, communicable diseases, and that staff had background checks for abuse and neglect and other issues. And that did not pass. So it's another reason why we think these, these contract arrangements are particularly a good way to go with many of our community-based partners who we know are good faith actors doing good work for children. Next slide, please. With that, I just want to end once again on a saying, again, I think all of our goal is that children aren't in school. And we made the choice to allow schools to open in Plan B back, back in July. We continue to, to look forward to seeing more schools move in that direction and are grateful to those who are doing it. We know how important it is for, for kids and for families. And the way we're going to get there together is by continuing to actively and consistently practice the three W's, wearing the cloth face covering, waiting six feet apart, washing hands, following the school guidance, which we're, we're so grateful to see so many schools are doing such a great job with. We will be launching a new campaign today. We're super excited about it, 2:00 PM in English, and then at 3:00 PM in Spanish, that is called Whatever Your Reason, Get Behind the Mask. So look forward to seeing lots of ads and things all over your communities about this new ad campaign. So very excited about that. And with that, Chairman Davis, I'll turn it back over to you. And we are happy to answer any questions and thank you for the opportunity to present today.
Thank you, Chief Deputy. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, we thank you again for the partnership and the great work in helping to keep our students, staff, and families safe. And we look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Thanks again. Another important partnership we have is with the North Carolina Athletic Association. And we're delighted to have the Commissioner of the North Carolina Athletic Association, Commissioner Q. Tucker, join us this morning for a presentation. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman Davis, and thank you to the entire State Board of Education members. I especially appreciate this opportunity to be able to share with you this morning. I want to give a shout out to my colleague and friend Wendell Hall, who not only is a member of your board, but also serves on our board as an affiliate member. And we really appreciate his leadership and guidance for us. I, as I said, I am pleased to be able to share with you this morning. We believe that education-based athletics are important to the mission of high schools across our state. And so towards that end, we have worked very diligently to be able to put forth guidelines that will follow and that do follow those very things that Susan and Rebecca were just mentioning as they talked about DHHS. They've been very important to what we have done. And so let me just kind of, what I'd like to do is to really kind of talk to you about in four areas. I want to talk about where we were, what we did, where we are currently, and then where we are going. So where we were is just like everybody else. On March 12th, COVID-19 effectively postponed all sports that we had going on. We had just entered spring sports season and we're in the, really in the final stages of preparing for our state basketball finals. And so all of that was postponed, and it kept being postponed with the hopes that we would be able to resume. Unfortunately, that did not happen, and it was in May, that we ended athletics for the 2019-2020 school year. That was the right thing to do as we were following all of the guidelines and the guidance coming from our governor, as well as from the Department of Health and Human Services. And for those spring sports athletes, it was an unfortunate end to their school year. So then what did we do? Next slide, please. What we did then is, as I mentioned, we worked with the DHHS staff, as well as the Department of Public Instruction staff, to look at ways that we could provide summer opportunities. And obviously, we were receiving information from the National And obviously, we were receiving information from the National Federation of High Schools, kind of our parent organization that's based in Indianapolis. And so our Board of Directors, which obviously oversee everything that we do as a staff here, the decision was made that on June 15th, using all of the guidelines from DHHS, looking at what DPI offered, and then utilizing the experience of our Sports Medicine Advisory Committee, we lifted what we called a dead period. We released guidelines that then effectively moved us into what we called NCHSA Phase 1. That was our summer guidance, which would allow conditioning and workouts. And as we always do in the summertime, summer workouts and conditioning is not mandated. And so LEAs could choose to allow their campuses to be opened for those workouts. We had guidance that talked about what areas were to remain closed. For example, weight rooms were closed, locker rooms remained closed. We put in all of the monitoring guidelines as to how they were to enter the facility or enter the venue where they would be participating. And so all of those guidelines were put in place, were submitted to our membership. And then on July 23rd, we delayed, the Board of Directors delayed the start of fall sports. We pushed that to September 1. As you are aware, typically, fall sports start August 1. But in keeping with the guidelines that the Governor was putting in place, we knew we were not at a point, based on the mass gatherings number, that we could start fall sports on August 1. So we pushed those to September 1. And then, of course, on August 3rd, we moved into what, the Governor moved us into those Phase 2 guidelines, and we also moved into Phase 2 guidelines, which allowed us to share equipment in small groups. For example, they could now pass a basketball within a small group of three girls, for example, that in baseball summer workouts. They could now share the bat, if that was the bat that those three individuals needed to use, but again, in those small groups. On August 12th, we released an amended sports calendar, because it became apparent at that point that we were no longer able to start sports on September 1, and that based on survey information that we had received from our superintendents, there was that feeling that we needed to delay any athletic events, formalized practices, as we would call them, until later in the semester or for sure into the second semester. We remain then in what we called our NCHSA Phase 2. Next slide. So where are we currently? Well, the NCHSA is still in Phase 2. Now, Phase 2 for us has incorporated skill development guidelines, which means that because we have started school, the school year has begun, we now have some more stringent requirements whenever you are in off-season workouts. And since we have no sporting events that will be contested, all of our sports are in their off-season. So there are certain things that coaches are allowed to do, certain things that they can do as they continue to work out with their athletes on campus, again, provided the school system will allow that. And so that's where they are right now. We also are continuing to follow the guidelines that we put in place as it relates to wearing masks, as it relates to waiting six feet or having six feet in between athletes as they are doing their skill development workouts, and that we want them to wash their hands as often as possible while they are participating. And we also know that there are local policies in place that guide our coaches, our athletic administrators, especially if there is a COVID case that breaks out. And because these young people have been working in small groups, it provides opportunity for the local health department to be able to help them know what quarantine needs to go into effect, how long that should occur. And so we feel good about the tools that our coaches have, that our athletic administrators have, in order to be able to keep our young people as safe as we possibly can. Next slide. So where are we going? Well, obviously, we, just like all of you, heard the Governor announce on Tuesday that we are now in Phase 2. And so that announcement on Tuesday means that we can adjust the numbers of athletes who can work out, condition, do skill development with their coaches. And so we, along with our Board of Directors, our staff and our Board of Directors, actually were meeting last night to try to incorporate those guidelines, as well as guidelines that will allow us as we get closer to when we believe we'll be able to play. And so we're looking towards announcing those that will not go into effect until next week, and so we will announce that. We still have hopes that we will one day move to Phase 3, and that will increase even further the mass gathering numbers. We are keenly aware, and we keenly understand, that we must follow the guidance from our Governor, as well as the Department of Health and Human Services. We have Bert Jenkins, who is a DPI staff member, serves on our Board of Director, and he helps us with the guidance that we need as it relates to the Department of Public Instruction. And so we continue to move towards a time when we'll be able to play. Perhaps we'll play with reduced numbers of fans in the stands. We're hopeful that we can get to that point. So currently, we are, we have cross-country and volleyball slated to begin on November 4. We have swimming and diving slated to begin in November. And then basketball is slated to begin its workouts and tryouts in December, but with no contests until after the Christmas holidays. And all other sports that we sanctioned would then follow a calendar that we have put in place beginning in January. We know that there are many, many questions that were made. We are hopeful that we will be able to knock down COVID, but we hope, more importantly, that we will be able to knock it out, because we feel like in order for us to offer education-based athletics, because we believe that it enhances the educational process that our young people experience on a day-to-day basis, we want sports to return. But we are clearly aware that they cannot return without us doing everything we can to keep these young people safe, which is part of our mission every day. That's our goal. That's one of our strategic priorities, is the health and the health and safety of our young people, the health and safety of anyone who participates in our program. So the calendar is there as a guidepost. We hope that we will be able to start sports in November, but we will continue to move forward with the guidance of the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm in contact with them. Our Sports Medicine Advisory Committee is, they keep their finger on the pulse of, I guess, medical information that helps us as we try to put this calendar, as we try to move us towards being able to implement the calendar. We thank the State Board of Education for your support. We know that many of the rules and regulations we have come from the State Board of Education, and we thank you for that support. We have 421 schools, and we appreciate you supporting us and believing in our efforts to provide the leadership and guidance, the leadership and governance for our 421-member schools. Education-based athletics is an opportunity for us to help the young people who come through our program be the citizens that we aspire them to be once they graduate from our high schools. Whether they ever play competitive athletics or not, we believe that what we provide them through education-based athletics has the opportunity to set them up to be productive citizens. And so again, we thank you for that trust. And I'll pause now to allow any questions that you may have for me, Chairman Davis.
Thank you, Commissioner Tucker. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Well, hearing none. Commissioner, just know that the work of your team, athletics in general, like all extracurricular activities, are such an important part of our children's education. It goes far beyond the skills of hitting a ball or making a tackle. It's teamwork, dedication, leadership, perseverance. Those are the skills that your program helps instill in our students and our future leaders in North Carolina. So we're grateful for your leadership, for your team's efforts, and for our partnership with you in the education of North Carolina's children.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I appreciate that very much. Take care, and best wishes for a continued good meeting.
Thank you very much. This time, I'll turn to Superintendent Johnson for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, members of the State Board. Obviously, there's a lot going on, a lot to discuss. Great thanks to all the schools across North Carolina who have gotten students back to learning. Again, as we talked about last month, we're in a situation where no one is going to be happy, but that is the result of COVID-19 and what it is doing to students. What I do want to focus on today is some exciting news, and that is our results for the choices for the K3 literacy diagnostics. We are excited about this program, and I want to express my sincere gratitude to the team at DPI who helped make a reality our idea of being able to use multiple K3 reading diagnostics across the entire state for Read to Achieve, instead of one tool having a monopoly on classrooms across the state. As you know, there has been so much unfortunate, unnecessary strife surrounding this issue, and that strife started with some bad acts of a few politically motivated bureaucrats who are no longer with DPI. And when we saw that the second RFP for a reading diagnostic had been corrupted in favor of one vendor, after the first RFP had to be canceled due to inappropriate actions, staff and I immediately explored the possibility of jumping straight to allowing districts to select their own diagnostic tools from a list of approved vendors. Unfortunately, back in 2019, the law at the time would not allow for such. But after working closely with the General Assembly, we were able to craft and launch such a program this school year. And I am pleased to report today that based on conversations I have had with other leaders across our nation, the nation is watching North Carolina with excitement, because we have innovated in a way that others want to emulate. So before I report out the choices, I want to make sure to thank everyone I can right now who helped make this possible. Obviously, a big thank you to David, Deputy Superintendent of Innovation. He was the voice at the State Board meetings for this work. But also, behind the scenes, I want to thank the team that helped develop this plan with me: Chloe Gosage, Ryan Boyce, Tara Galloway, Tammy Howard, and Tom Tomberlin, and anyone that helped them with this process. I want to thank the General Assembly, the General Assembly for supporting this innovative step. Innovation is not something that comes natural to government. Government wants certainty and clarity, so the General Assembly supporting this innovative step was very, very helpful for us. Most of all, I want to thank the local superintendents, K3 teachers, and central office staff, who gave chains a chance despite all the challenges and are taking this next step with us. And last but not least, I want to offer a sincere debt of gratitude to this State Board. Look, I fully acknowledge that the State Board was reluctant to give districts the choice of multiple options, and while DPI was working on its plan to allow districts to select from multiple vendors, the State Board was lobbying the General Assembly to limit the choice to only two, being iStation and Amplify. And I know we had a disagreement on this, and I'm truly grateful that we were able to work together to get to this point and have this plan that gives districts a choice. Again, I can tell you, based on conversations I've had with other leaders, there are a lot of eyes on this and a lot of excitement about such an innovative plan working. So how did the districts choose? The following are the results from the 115 local school districts. We also have information for charter schools, but charter schools, as you might recall, were always able to choose from a list of diagnostics. They did not have to accept the one statewide diagnostic. What is positive for even charter schools under this plan is now, no matter which tool they pick, if it's off that list, they can also get the funding from Read to Achieve with it, whereas under the previous plan, they had to pick the statewide-approved diagnostic tool in order to get that extra funding. So now even those charter schools are getting that extra funding to support our youngest learners. So the tool serving the most district students this year will be iStation. iStation is serving 160,000 kindergarten through third-grade students. istation is followed closely by another great tool, which many districts were already using and already familiar with, called iReady. iReady will serve just over 140,000 students. The next highest total is for the MAP Assessment Tool, which is at about 60,000 students, and that's a great tool that has a long history in the Charlotte Mecklenburg School System, so they've opted to use that. Together, the computer adaptive technologies of iStation, iReady, MAP, and STAR will serve over 90% of all K3 students. Districts also have the option to select M-class. As we all know, the tool used statewide until 2018, 8% of students will use M-class in this upcoming school year. So this is a very exciting step for North Carolina's Read to Achieve program. It started with a few people brainstorming ideas in an office in DPI, and thanks to a lot of hard work by DPI and local school districts and teachers, this is now a reality that other states will likely want to emulate. And again, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the team at DPI who helped make this possible and are watching it very closely. We feel very confident that it will work and be a success, but we will be watching closely to make sure we have the data to back that up through this school year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. We'll now proceed to the remaining committee reports. I remind committee chairs and the audience that all voting on consent and any item requiring action will be done at the end of the agenda via roll call. We'll now proceed to the Educator Standards and Practice Committee chaired by Dr. Olivia Oxendine. Dr. Oxendine?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I am Olivia Oxendine, and I chair the Educator Standards and Practice Committee of the State Board of Education. And joining me in that responsibility is Ms. Amy White. We have two items under Action on First Reading, which is the first component of the My section of the agenda. We have Action on First Reading. We have two action items under the second category. We have one item, ES and P5, under discussion, which gives us a total of five items. So I will spin back up to the first category, ES and P1. For, this is the NESIS. It's going to be an PowerPoint overview provided by Dr. Robert Socks. And I might say, the more I think about this item, I've thought about this item, I would say, I see a little bit of implication between what you are about to learn, see and learn, and our presentation yesterday by Dr. Ren and Ms. Shaw Coltrane on the remote learning plan that is in Senate Bill 704. I think it contains about 11 or 13 items in that plan. So I sense there is a little bit of correlation between these two items. So without delay, I will turn the virtual stage, my virtual stage, over to Dr. Socks.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Chairman Davis, Superintendent Johnson, members of the Board. Thank you for this. Chairman Davis, Superintendent Johnson, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to share with you guidance that we intend to provide to districts for observing remote and blended learning. The North Carolina Educator Evaluation System, known as NICES, is an annual process that requires teachers and evaluators to engage in a collaborative cycle of goal-setting, learning, observation, and reflection to analyze professional and instructional practices and use the NICES rubric to document the teacher's knowledge, skills, and practices. Next slide, please, Deanna. Thank you. When school buildings closed in March of 2020, the instructional year functionally ended and an emergency response scenario began. At this time, districts implemented an enrichment and engagement-only model as they rallied to assess their local bandwidth and their infrastructure for keeping students and teachers connected. This variation of models, tools, and resources in place during, throughout the state for helping teachers and students make the shift from face-to-face instruction to online remote teaching and learning was significant. This period of frenetic change was not an appropriate environment from which to collect valid data for evaluating a teacher's professional and instructional practices. So for these reasons, the department directed administrators not to attempt to formally observe online instructional activities that occurred between March and June of 2020 for the purpose of evaluating. And we directed them to suspend any NICES process steps that had not already been conducted prior to the school closure. As we start the new school year, we have prepared resources to help teachers and school leaders better understand the NICES process requirements because there is an existing inaccurate assumption that we stopped using NICES in March because something about the tool was not valid for evaluating. However, the thing that was not valid for evaluating was actually the unstable instructional So as teachers now move forward with standards and curriculum using remote and blended learning models, the use of NICES is even more critical for supporting educators as they align and refine their instruction in this new context. Observation is essential for supporting teacher practice. The NICES rubric measures two types of practice. Instructional practices are addressed in Standards 2, 3, and 4. Professional practices are addressed in Standards 1 and 5. The appropriate context for observing each teacher practice type is actually indicated on the left side of the rubric, as you can see here in this example from Standard 2. Instructional practice elements are indicated by a check mark in the observation column on the left-hand side. Professional practice elements do not have this check on the left-hand side. It's really important for teachers and evaluators to fully understand where the practices described in the rubric are most visible. And information about instructional practices gets collected through observation of the activities and resources teachers use to engage students in academic content and assess the achievement of lesson outcomes. Where instructional practices are visible may vary depending on which column of the rubric is actually being considered. For instance, while the knowledge requirements described in the first column of the rubric may be seen while watching a lesson, these may also be visible outside of an instructional activity. Additionally, conversations between the evaluator and the teacher can provide important evidence about what a teacher knows. So the instructional practices described in the first column of the rubric may or may not take place during a specific lesson. But the next two columns within the instructional, that's the same slide, please, Deanna, thank you. The next two columns within the instructional practice sections of the rubric describe student-to-teacher interactions and interactions that are only visible within academic activities that yield instructional outcomes. So the descriptors in these two columns require an evaluator to observe a specific lesson, activity, or assignment. The last column for instructional practices describes the extension of the teacher's practices beyond a specific lesson or assignment. This extension of influence is visible to an evaluator as a teacher collaborates with teammates and colleagues to improve learning outcomes. The instructional practices described in the very last column of the rubric are not behaviors that actually take place during a specific individual lesson or instructional Modeling ethical behaviors and maintaining professional standards are important professional practices that are demonstrated throughout the year as the teacher interacts with staff, students, and parents within the broader school community. To see these elements, an evaluator must observe a teacher's interactions with others and assess the degree to which those efforts productively engage students, staff, and families to achieve successful outcomes at the school. Evidence of professional practice is visible to evaluators within team meetings and professional learning communities, as well as through the communications and interactions that occur between the teacher, his or colleagues, parents, and students outside of instruction. There are actually now more places to look as remote and blended learning models expand the times and places that teacher practices are visible to an evaluator. Traditional in-person instruction is synchronous as the teacher engages students with lesson activities at the same time and in the very same place. Remote instruction moves the synchronous model beyond the physical brick-and-mortar walls of a classroom as tools like WebEx, Google, and Zoom now bring learners and their teachers together in a virtual instructional space. In addition to expanding the landscape of synchronous instruction, remote and blended learning models also open pathways for asynchronous instruction where teachers and students' interactions associated with a specific lesson do not occur at the same time. Now, emails, blogs, and pre-recorded instructional videos allow teachers to remotely deliver academic content to students who can then engage with that content on their own schedule and at their own pace. Virtual instruction extends the means by which teachers engage learners. So as evaluators work to observe teachers' instructional and professional practices, remote and blended learning models offer even more places to look. So when considering the use of synchronous and asynchronous activities for observation and evaluation, there are still some very important conditions of use. Because the NICES process assumes that a classroom observation reasonably assesses the full scope of an instructional event, formal and informal observations used to complete the NICES rubric need to assess instructional activities that are of an appropriate duration or amount. So observation of synchronous instructional activities, whether these are in-person or remote, must meet the time length specified in policy for the given evaluation plan type. Observation of asynchronous instructional activities need to include all materials, interactions, and outcomes associated with a specific lesson, activity, or assignment. To the extent possible, synchronous events should be observed when instructional practices are being assessed. Using asynchronous activities alone to conduct observations should only occur if observation of synchronous instruction is not practicable. NCPI has prepared resources to help teachers and school leaders understand these requirements as they work together to support and evaluate high-quality teaching and learning practices within the remote and blended learning environments. These resources include NICES supplemental resource documents that specifically address general process information, observing professional and instructional practices, documenting these professional and instructional practices on the rubric, and then evaluating teacher performance. Additionally, we offer each year statewide webinars to support NICES in which this information will be included. This year, there will be a use of some of the CARES Act funding to actually provide professional learning for school leaders, and we're working in a partnership with NC Papa to provide those. And we also have existing online resources and support that we will use to communicate this information further. Dr. Tom Tomberlin and I will be communicating about the specific resources and materials to human resources directors and district NICES administrators using our existing listservs, user groups, and upcoming webinars. That concludes the information I wanted to share with the board today. Dr. Oxendine, at this time, I will open up, see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Socks. And do I have any questions? Are there questions from my colleagues about the information Robert just shared with us? Let me ask a quick question, Dr. Socks, if I may.
Sure.
The, in the asynchronous mode, is it possible for a principal to do some evaluation of the teacher by reviewing, let's say, the Canvas site where materials and lessons are located?
Yes. I think if you think about the slide that shares the way the rubric is structured for instructional practices, your example of reviewing the Canvas site would absolutely provide evidences of a teacher's knowledge of the appropriate content practices in pedagogy. To some degree, the Canvas site alone gives you about half of the information about a teacher's actions to bring about the positive change in the classroom. So if a principal needed to check off the knowledge column of the rubric simply from the Canvas site, he or she certainly could see that information. But if they wanted to know if they could check off the action part from the Canvas site, seeing it in the Canvas site alone would not be enough. The principal would need to confirm that the students actually had the opportunity to receive that information. And once the principal could confirm that, yes, what was on the Canvas site was also shared with students, then absolutely, yes, ma'am, that information on Canvas could be and would be appropriate for checking off the professional practices descriptors in the rubric.
Thank you so much. And then I have another question. The principal or an instructional coach or the AP, the assistant principal, most likely principal AP would be the one officially charged with the official evaluation. Could that individual go within Canvas, request to be a guest, and take part in, observe a lesson?
I would say that our expectation of how a principal would have access to those instructional practices would be from actually watching that interaction. And in Canvas, I would assume the best way to do that would be a guest in the instructional space to observe it as it was occurring.
To invite, or the teacher would invite the principal?
Yes, ma'am, I would assume so. I'm not sure what the actual structures within Canvas for those permissions are, but that's what I would assume.
All right. Very, very, very good, because this can be so abstract, evaluating, observing in a virtual world. Very much so. Any other questions from my comment, I mean, from my colleagues?
Dr. Oxendine, JB.
Yes, Mr. Box.
Thank you. Just a quick observation, whether the pandemic's with us for a while and we're all doing this longer than we would hope, or it's over more quickly, I think everything we've seen shows us that if we get ubiquitous internet access and device access, instructional environments are likely to change in some way, shape, or form. And if that means teachers are providing more materials and assignments online or opportunity to access with instructional materials and changing some of the features of face-to-face, likely our observation and evaluations of teachers have to change as well. So I just find this to be really important and thoughtful work and probably something we're going to have to wrestle with no matter what happens with the pandemic because I think the nature of our instruction has probably changed forever to some degree, especially if we move to the ubiquitous access. So I appreciate Dr. Socks and Dr. Tomberlin and their colleagues as they start puzzling through how the dynamic is changing for evaluation. I just want to make that comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much for that comment, and it was well-made and absolutely so true. We have reformed, or we're in the process every day of reforming public education, not in just in the Tar Heel state, but around the world, probably. This is excellent work. I have not clicked on each of the hyperlinks in the presentation, Dr. Socks. I've clicked on a couple, and one I'm going to use myself. It's techniques and ideas and creative strategies in a remote environment. So please, I know you will, draw teachers' attention to those hyperlinks because those hyperlinks, that's where the magic lies, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you so much for this good work. And this is, board members, this is an Action on First Reading. And moving on to the next item, ES and P2, this is a policy amendment. It is in the licensure area of our policy, and this is regarding the EDTPA and the PPAT cut scores. And Dr. Seiberg is going to have the honors.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine, and good morning, board members. This is coming to you, we have to make a change to some, a table in LICN 003. If you could go to the next slide, please. Let me give you a little bit of context. This EDTPA and PPAT, these are the pedagogy assessment requirements for candidates going forward. And when we initially established the policy around it, we built the table that's in front of you here. And you can see that in row four, under 2020, 21, the, there was this anticipation that the scores may move up after we have a full year of data from 19 and 20 to look at. Initially, the scores were set on the lower end of the recommended range from the vendors, and that was intentional because it was trying to get the educator system up and running. And, you know, there was a lot of work to change curriculum and strategy. This has been a multi-year process to get EDTPA and PPAT up and running. And so we're now at this focal point of looking at, you know, are we moving these test scores up, or are we holding them the same? If you go to the next slide, so what we did for Pepsi, the Professional Educator Preparation and Standards Commission, we provided the data for them to look at. For the, for EDTPA, a little bit of context here, that is a series of different tests, and they are assessed based on different numbers of rubrics. The preponderance of tests fall in the 15 rubric category. About a little under 6,000 folks took that assessment in 2019, 2020, where it was consequential. We set the cut score, again, a couple of years back, at 38, a score of 38. And what you're looking at here is data that's saying that essentially, based on the data that we've collected from 19 and 20, that we had a failure rate of 11.6%. And in looking at the consideration to move that score to a score of 40, which is the proposed cut score, you can see that the failure rate would move from 11.6% to 16%. Another thing that we looked at was how the first attempt differed from the best attempt. And you'll see when you look at all this data that the difference between those is less than one percentage point, and that actually makes sense because we've only had one year of collecting this data, and so there really isn't that many folks taking the test more than once. So largely, the first and the best are fairly close together. So again, we're looking at the 15 rubrics. That's the most of the tests in EDTPA. Then there are two smaller test rubric numbers. The next slide will show you 18 rubrics, I believe. Yeah, 18 rubrics. There were 764 test takers last year that took 18 rubrics. This is specifically elementary that focuses on both language and mathematics. They had a 13.4% failure rate with the cut score set at 45. And if the, if we move that to a 48, the failure rate would move to an 18.3% based on last year's data. And again, the average score is relatively stable. If you go to the next slide, the third kind of test that's available are 13 rubric tests. You'll see it's a very small sample size, 91. 13 rubric tests are limited to classical language and world language, so a much smaller population. And you'll see that the cut score currently has a failure rate of 21.1% for a 32, a score of 32. And if that were to move to what is currently in policy, that would move to 30%. And then we also ran this data over the PPAT, which is a different vendor and a different test, essentially doing the same thing, though, it's measuring pedagogy. And in the PPAT, they are not subject-specific. They are, one test can be used for any subject. And here we see the failure rate with the current cut score at 38, at 4.1%. And if that were to move to a score of 40, that would be a 10% failure rate there. A little bit more change between the average score on the first A little bit more change between the average score on the first attempt versus the best attempt, but essentially very stable there as well. So we brought this to Pepsi at the last Pepsi meeting back in mid-August. And ultimately, it was unanimously recommended from that group to keep these cut scores the same as the prior year instead of moving them up. And there were a couple really strong opinions about leaving them where they're at. There is some concerns in the field about the COVID challenges that are moving a lot of the student teachers to online scenarios, and this idea of the unknown being in place. They just felt very strongly to leave all the tests where they're at. So that is the formal recommendation to the board today. And the decision would ultimately set this in place to be, will make that change to that table, and it would be effective as of September 1 of 2020 going forward.
All right, excellent. And this is, we're going to take action today. On the side of, do I hear questions from my colleagues? This is pretty clear-cut. It's good to know the difference. While I heard the differences between these two assessments, I am clear now that PPAT is all content, EDTPA is more content-specific.
Yes.
And no significant changes? After your analysis, therefore, the cut scores will remain consistent? No change?
That's the recommendation from Pepsi.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Dr. Seiberg.
Dr. Oxendine, could I ask a question?
There is a question. I think that is from Vice Chair.
Yes, Alan Duncan.
May, yes.
Because student teaching was mentioned here, because of the issues that arose with student teaching last year and the uncertainty at best of where we may be with student teaching this year, is there a plan in place or a thought in place about how that's going to be handled or treated this year as part of this process?
Sir, I think I only heard about 60% of that, but let me see if I can say back to you what I thought I heard you asking was, is there a plan in place to address the uncertainty going forward of EDTPA and PPAT? Is that what you were getting at?
I think the question is most broadly, is there a plan in place about how we're going to handle the student teaching part of this process this year, given the uncertainties that we saw last year and what we have to recognize as a possibility this year? Was that any clearer?
Yeah, let me see if I, I'll try and respond here, and if I miss the mark, we can circle back. But currently, the way the law is written, student teaching, the expectations of student teaching are all still in place as they always have been. They made some accommodations in 704 in the spring to account for the disruption and the, you know, the complete closure of all schools for a couple of weeks, so that student teachers could be passed through the program based on the EPP's assessment of their work to that point. And so while that accommodation was put in place in the spring, there is no accommodation for adjusting for the fall yet. So we are essentially doing what is required in law, which is the 16 weeks with an opportunity to, if there's a way to put it together, the 16-week would have an opportunity for the student candidates to explore the student teaching experience both at the beginning and the end of the school year. And to the best of their ability, the EPPs are trying to do that. Given the potential that COVID could come back and cause a major disruption, my assumption would be that the lawmakers would step back in and make adjustments like they did with 704 in the spring. But until that actually happens, that is, the expectation is that we would continue to pace as we always have until that disruption occurs. Does that answer your question?
Yes, does that contemplate that someone could get all their student teaching through remote learning or remote instruction?
Obviously, it is not ideal, but the law doesn't prevent that from occurring. And certainly, the educator preparation programs are doing the best to provide experiences that are face-to-face where it can be done. So that's certainly everybody's position going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is a very timely question, and it's on the minds of every dean of a college or school of education and MSA programs, because we also have internships in our principal preparation programs.
Indeed.
Okay, other question, Chair Davis, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Very good.
Dr. Seiberg, thank you for this.
Yes, sir.
Gives me a good idea of the impact of changing the cut score on pass or fail rates. Maybe a harder question is, assuming a higher cut score correlates to some degree of higher quality, can you share with us your thoughts on, to what degree of quality are we not taking advantage of by keeping the cut scores where they are now? Or what are we missing on by not having a higher standard in terms of quality?
With your permission, sir, I would love to have Dr. Tomberlin as sort of the expert of all things data to respond to that. I think he's in a better position to respond to that than me. Dr. Tomberlin, are you available for that?
I am here, yes. Thank you. Chair Davis, I think it's a great question, and we certainly want to, the whole goal of this was just to see where we are and then ramp up the standards based on what we knew and how well teachers were responding to the preparation they were receiving to complete this assessment. Right now, we don't have the data we would love to have to see this, to make those determinations. So one of the major issues that we're facing is, of course, the COVID pandemic that's kind of slowed that data to a trickle, as well as the fact that we do consider EDTPA and PPAT to be a licensure examination. And therefore, it falls under the rule of attempting the first, pass by the end of the third year of the license. And so we're going to see, you know, this kind of wave of data coming in, and it's going to take us till about 2022 to start seeing full cohorts and the type of data we need to see to make some really good determinations about where the cut score should be to support high-quality teachers entering the profession.
Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on the question a bit, Dr. Tomberlin. In the analysis of results, is there one particular area that appears to be giving candidates difficulty, the most difficulty? I don't know whether you look that closely.
So on that, I would, to that, I would refer back to Dr. Seiberg to see if there's any particular rubric that's showing higher-than-average failure rates.
And I can tell you, right now, we have not done an individual rubric analysis, so that's something we can certainly do and bring back to the board. Right now, what we were looking at was the overall pass rate, but we have not disaggregated it down to the individual to see if there's any findings at that level.
Might be useful to do that before we have further discussions about setting cut scores as well. That would be down-the-road, good information to bring forward. Other thoughts or comments from my colleagues? Thank you both, Dr. Seiberg, Dr. Tomberlin.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to the two action items in ES and P3. This is the TEACH proposal that is coming back to us today. It had some improvements, some tweaks to the proposal. And so if, is this Dr. Seiberg, if you could come back to the mic or address and talk us through this?
Sure, this is, really quickly, so this was initially brought to the board in July. There were some questions that were brought up about the proposal specifically in the area of literacy and a couple of other nuanced questions. So essentially, long story short, we took all of the feedback from the discussion of the board in July and handed that back to the leadership at TEACH. TEACH has since then made modifications to their proposal, which is before you pay for consideration. So that's, that's warranted.
Okay, very good. I took a close look at the revisions, and I just want to highlight some things that I am very happy to see. The emphasis on middle grades, special education, because we are, we know we're going to have a need in special education teachers in the pipeline. So it's really good to see that TEACH is giving an emphasis to middle grades on special education. There is a very strong emphasis, Board members, on child growth and development, adolescent growth and development. Very happy to see that. There's a lot of attention to courses that orient the candidates to the profession of teaching, which I think is marvelous, and an orientation course on ethics in the profession, and also a good orientation on what it means to be a TEACH candidate. So kudos to the developers, because they've really given good attention to the grounding aspects of the program. And they, the developers went back to the board to reconsider science. The science of reading is clearly spelled out, very brilliant in the proposal that we will vote on today. So I'm excited about TEACH, and I think they plan to launch in January 21, so the best to them. Okay, very good. So we will move on, unless there are questions or comments. We'll move on to ES and P4, which is our weighted accountability model, and also an amendment to Teacher Education 016 that pertains to the graduate and the employer survey requirements that's part of House Bill 107. So I will ask either Dr. Seiberg or Dr. Tomberlin to come forward and talk about, just kind of summarize this item again for us.
Sure, this is Andrew Seiberg. I'm happy to summarize it for you. So again, this is, the weighted accountability model was an obligation in law for Pepsi to take on. Essentially, what it's doing is, in law, they created three accountability requirements, and they said to Pepsi, we're putting some accountability in place here, but we are recognizing that the experts in the field are probably going to come up with a better accountability model. So you go and do that, and then bring it back to us, and we will consider modifying the law based on the accountability model proposal that you bring us. And so that's what we're doing here. So we've spent the better part of about 20 months now thinking very carefully about the accountability model, looking at a variety of different approaches around the country. And it came back to the board in February for consideration. We took some feedback, particularly around the idea of including a diversity component in the model. And we went back to the drawing board and did some updates and some tweaks. This came to you, I think, last month for sort of the, we've taken all the considerations of the board into the model and made the necessary changes where we could. We have an accountability model now that has a diversity component incorporated into it to the best of our ability, given the data that we have. The Pepsi recognizes that while we've only used race and ethnicity as the only measure for diversity this go-around, they have also left the door open and are strongly recommending that other components of diversity be considered going forward. And, you know, as we collect those other areas, we can certainly broaden that diversity area. And again, just as a mentioning of caution here, that what you're voting on in this model is not to make this model, not to actualize this model, this is to recommend this model go to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee for consideration and ultimately modifications to the law, which would then actualize it going forward from that point. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands.
Thank you so much. If you, the TCED, the 016, TCED 016, I've had a couple of questions about the, it requires that the first year of the beginning teacher, that the graduate survey be completed for the end of the first year, is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And let me give you a little context for that. So the reason the TCED 016, the recommendation to modify that is incorporated into this proposal that's before all of you today, is because the survey is currently, it's one of the three measures in the accountability requirements in law right now, and it's also one of the, one of the measures in the proposed model as well, to gather feedback from the principals who hire these beginning teachers, as well as the folks that recently have graduated from programs, to sort of provide a 360 lens as to what's going on in terms of their preparedness to be effective in the classroom. And to that end, while it is a requirement in both of those areas, our response rate has not been really strong. It's been, I think, around 50% or even lower. One was in the mid-30s, and one was around 50%. And so to have an accountability model where the response rate is low like that is certainly not a healthy way of thinking about an accountability model. So one way that we thought of approaching this is currently those surveys are not required, they are optional. And the idea of incorporating it as a requirement into first-year teacher supporting, you know, the beginning teacher support program, would necessitate a higher, well, it would obligate folks to take the surveys, which would increase our response rate, which would make it a more robust measure for either the accountability model that's currently in place or the one that's being proposed. So long story short, that's how we got to thinking about amending 016.
Well, that's very good. I mean, to use that TCED avenue as the leverage for that, because that also corresponds and answers part two of the weighted model that has to do with the setting of floor minimum for the survey responses. So that's, those two go together. I guess my question is this, could an EPP have a clause, let's say, I'm giving you, this is a scenario, a possible scenario.
Sure.
Could an EPP have a clause in it, in, I'm sure, existing agreements with LEAs whereby there would be some assurance that we are getting those surveys in a timely manner and a good quantity of surveys?
Yes, it's a great question, Dr. Oxendine. So right now, we're in the process of working with our colleagues across the field and NCACTE to help build a more robust MOU. The Memorandum of Understanding is a requirement of all EPPs to have a relationship, a working and understood relationship that has clarity in what each side is going to do between the EPP and its support of the student teacher, as well as the LEA and its support and obligations of the student teacher as well. So a logical place to incorporate some language around an expectation of principals responding to that survey and beginning teachers responding to that survey certainly could be in the language of that standardized language, yeah.
And could be communicated to the EPPs.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
In their agreement statements, with formal agreement statements with school districts.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. We're on the way with that one. Terrific. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? And we'll move on to the last item, Chair Davis, which is ES and P5, a discussion item. and this pertains to, this is built into 599, that we will have a report on the work of Pepsi, and I believe Dr. Kim Evans is going to present to us.
That's right. Thank you, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you.
So this morning, I'm presenting the annual report for the Professional Educator Preparation and Standards Commission, and this is for the time period of September 1, 2019 to September 1, 2020. And just to give a little overview, well, Dr. Oxendine has already let us know that this comes straight from 599. This has a December 1 due date each year, and it goes from the State Board to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee before that due date, by that due date. I just wanted to give a little overview of the commission in case folks out there aren't aware of what Pepsi is. So Pepsi is legislatively appointed, and it's 18 members, and it provides the State Board with rule and policy recommendations for K-12 and educator preparation areas around licensure and standard. So I just wanted to give that quick overview, and I've already mentioned the report term, and the rest of it is just an overview of what the report, the design of the report is. So it is just like the past two years with the report, starts out with the introduction and goes through all the way into meetings and then future subcommittee work. And now I'm going to give a little overview and highlights of what we've done this year, this past year. So House Bill, when House Bill 1235 became session law 202092, there were three reappointments, and it was Lauren Janeski, Patrick Miller, who is the chair of Pepsi, and then Dr. Hank Weddington to re, to keep their place at Pepsi. And they, their reappointment expires August 31, 2022. And then these are three members who have left. Dr. Ellen McIntyre, she was the dean at UNC Charlotte. Ms. Megan Loftus, she was a principal for Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and Mrs. Mariah Morris, we all know her, she is the 2019 State Teacher of the Year. And the next slide lets you know who has taken their places. So these appointments, and they will also expire August 31, 2022. Dr. Randall Penfield, he's the dean of the College of Education at UNC Greensboro. He replaces Dr. McIntyre and Mr. Blanton, Christopher Blanton, he's the principal at Watauga High School. He's replacing Mrs. Loftus. And then Ms. Maureen Stover, who we heard speak earlier, she's the 2020 State Teacher of the Year, she will be replacing Ms. Morris. And then there's one outstanding member who has not been filled, and I am currently working with Mr. McKinney, who's the legislative liaison for the State Board, to put that into place. And this is a roster for 2020, 2021 for the Pepsi members. So you can see all 17 of them together. Thank you, Deanna. Next, I'll go into commission meetings. We had 25 meetings total, and 13 of them were subcommittee meetings. And I wanted to let the State Board know that a majority of those meetings had to do with the EPP weighted accountability model that Dr. Seiberg just reviewed, and so a majority of that work was around that model and designing that proposal. And then we had 12 monthly meetings that brought the entire commission together. And the next two slides are about future subcommittee work, and so the three subcommittees are licensure, assessment, and performance in educator preparation. And I want to go to the next slide to let the State Board know that the next subcommittee, the most immediate subcommittee work that will be focused on has to come, is coming straight from Senate Bill 599, and you can see it asterisk there and listed all the way down with the bullets. So those are the areas that we will be focusing on next, and they're the Educator Preparation Subcommittee. And one more, I just wanted to highlight one more thing, that a link will be added for August 13, 2020, because that meeting, the minutes for that meeting have not been posted yet, and so I will add that link to this report, and that will be the final piece to complete the report. Are there any questions?
Any questions, colleagues? I just cannot thank Pepsi enough for the work that it does for the State Board of Education and for educators and EPPs across the state. So many of the questions that we could or would potentially ask related to licensure or teacher education, all the policies that come before us through this committee, ES and P, those questions probably have been asked and answered by Pepsi before we have our State Board meetings. It is ambitious in terms of the schedule and the meetings. I mean, you see 25 meetings, over half of them were subcommitting. That subcommittee is where the weeds are cultivated and pulled and thought about. So I just, I can't, I mean, for a while, we did quite well, ES and P, Dr. Tomberlin and his expert consultants, we did very well. But along comes Pepsi, 599 made that possible. So I won't say anymore. I think I've made my point. We just, you're invaluable, and thank you, Dr. Evans, for this report.
You're welcome. And the commission thanks you too, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you. Chair Davis, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. We'll now take a break and reconvene at noon.